Okay, it is Tuesday, April 27th, and it is 7:05 PM. I will call the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. We are holding this meeting via Zoom, and Candace will start with roll call.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
And I did hear you say Robin might be a few minutes late.
Might be late. Okay. Good. The first item on our agenda then tonight is a presentation on the Platteville Public Library, and we welcome our Director of that Library, Jessie Lee Jones, to make her presentation. Welcome, Jessie.
Hello, thank you for having me. Just give me one moment while I get my screen shared here. Can you confirm that you can hear me okay?
I can hear you.
All right, great. So I'm gonna go ahead and just share a brief presentation. I like to come every year in April. We celebrate National Library Week in April. Last year, obviously, things were a little bit different, so I don't believe I got to share with you last year. But I did want to assure you all that we have been very busy and productive in this past year, albeit in a different manner, maybe a little less publicly visible, but we have still been here and we still have been serving the public. So I'll briefly breeze through some of our accomplishments. So to begin with, we did support the city with the spring and fall election efforts. I was very impressed with how hard all of the city staff worked to pull that together, and it was an honor to be a part of that project and to see such an engaged community. We attended Westview's Math and Reading Night. We worked with volunteers from across UW-Platteville on a variety of projects and programs. We collaborated with the Platteville Holiday Project, which is an annual contribution that we like to provide to the community members. Let's see, we offered a lot of different programs that provided opportunities for adults to connect and gather at the library as a third place outside of home and work. And of course, that was much more in the first quarter of the year than the rest of the year. We did try some unique programming such as Palatine's Day Puzzle Tournaments. Here's the puzzle tournament. We had a great turnout for that. One of our annual traditions is Peeps-O-Rama, so we encourage the community to get creative and create a diorama based on a book and using those adorable little, in my opinion, inedible marshmallow treats. So that's often the highlight of many families' years here in Platteville at the library. We did contribute again to the Community Involvement Fair in 2020. It's a really great opportunity to meet and network with different community service organizations. We personally gained a library board member through this event, so I hope that others also experience some success by bringing some great leaders together in one place on a Saturday. We hosted a variety of virtual and in-person learning opportunities to reach new and infrequent users and build stronger connections among area residents. We developed family-friendly events and programs that allowed families to learn together, use their imaginations, and express their creativity. We are continuing to grow our young adult and teen programming and are working to encourage positive use of the library by that age range. We contributed dozens and dozens of programs, both in-person and virtually this year. We acquired a new app called Beanstack, which allows patrons to track their reading and earn badges and earn prizes through the library. We featured our resources through fun programs, social media posts, and displays. We really tried to capture what might be going on in our community or around the country to try to pull together some reading recommendations based on popular discussion. So here are some more examples of what we've been highlighting this past year. So we increased community awareness of the library's resources, services, and policies. We're constantly trying to educate the public on how they can maximize the public library and how they can make it work to their advantage. And then COVID struck, so the library closed on Monday, March 16th, and we went through a variety of service levels based on the number of cases within our community and what we could safely accommodate here at the library. Based on the Wisconsin DPI's recommendations, we did move furniture to discourage lingering patrons. Public computers were spread out throughout the first floor, and collections were moved around to allow for social distancing. The building maintenance specialist Shannon installed lovely sneeze guards, and he really went above and beyond to make sure that we were on track with our facility. After closing in March, we had a series of leadership meetings to map out all of the possibilities to keep the staff and the public safe while operating and providing library services. So we divided up into two teams, and those teams really never crossed paths. They worked separate, opposite each other. So we implemented a curbside pickup service, which is still in place today and may be in place forever. It seems like a really popular service that our patrons seem to be enjoying. And then we had to figure out a new system for quarantining library materials. At the time I made this, we were quarantining our items for 48 hours, and we were having all materials quarantined at System Headquarters in Fenimore. Since then, we've received additional guidance, and we're back to a 24-hour quarantine here in Platteville, and the system is no longer quarantining. And then we did have to transform our first-floor large study room into a quarantine and check-in space, which allowed our staff to spread out throughout the library. And then we developed a system for communication about what's clean, what's dirty, where we're at in the process. We found new ways to connect with our patrons via virtual programs, weekly craft kits for adults and youth, creative window displays. And then we continued delivering materials to senior living facilities and created senior little libraries using grant funds from the Platteville Community Fund and the Library Foundation. One of our strategic goals during our strategic planning process, we identified the need to just continue to adjust and adapt to our new building. So some of the accommodations we made this year, with great support from the city, we were able to get that crosswalk painted on the corner of Main and Elm Street. Electricians worked to install outlets in the staff workroom, and then we were able to add a protective window film on all of the windows or along the one side of the first-floor windows, which we hope will prevent premature fading of our materials. So in terms of staff development, that's another one of our strategic priorities. We partnered with our system to offer several pre-pandemic professional development opportunities in person. And then you can just see we've attended a variety of web-based classes and different workshops throughout the state. Before the pandemic, we were also able to attend Library Legislative Day in Madison. One of our library employees and a community volunteer have been working on something called the Wisconsin Libraries Transforming Communities. There are small groups throughout the state that are participating in this program to really engage with the community members, find out what the library can do to support the needs of our community aside from just what we're already doing in the library, going out and engaging further. And again, a variety of... This is just a sample of some of the webinars we attended. We presented at some of these as well, in addition to just being attendees. And then we received a variety of grant funds to support both COVID-related projects and just some of our operational expenses. Then we have a very engaged library foundation. They hosted their first-ever donor appreciation event on Valentine's Day, and it was a really successful and fun evening. And then they also updated their major donor wall. This wall had been installed with a few quirks, and we worked successfully with Shannon and the donor wall company to create a permanent display. So then a few other small things. We added a few new employees. We participated in many Zoom meetings. We added two fish to our team. And most importantly, most excitingly, we did go fine-free. So here at the library, we project a positive attitude and demonstrate enthusiasm for our jobs and the service provided both inside the library and in the community. So that is the end of my presentation. I did want to give you all an opportunity to ask me any questions, since I don't often get the floor at a city council meeting. I thought this would be a good time to answer any questions or comments you might have for me.
Okay, Jessie, will you first stop sharing your screen?
Yes.
And then I'll make a round robin and ask if anybody has questions. So Isaac, any comments, questions, or suggestions?
No questions, but no questions but an Isaac's presentation.
Great. Eileen? We can't hear you, Eileen.
I unmuted myself once. Okay. Nice presentation, good information, nice photos. I think it really captures what you and the staff did during the pandemic. I know I was one of the people that often went to pick up books and things from the library, and I really appreciated having that service, I guess, because I like to read a lot.
Good. Right. Ken?
Okay. Good information. I was wondering, maybe you said already, when do you see in the crystal ball as far as when you're gonna open up so we can go in more readily?
Right. Well, right now, we are open to the public 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to noon on Saturdays. So you can come in anytime during those hours. And then it looks like we're shooting for May 12th to be the date where we expand our hours. And at that point, then, we would be looking to do 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday. There will still be some limitations in place. I don't anticipate having all of our furniture available. We know we're not going to be allowing food and drinks throughout the summer just so that we can encourage good mask-wearing. So there will be a few accommodations still in place, but for the most part, it will start to feel a little more normal in mid-May.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, any comments, questions, suggestions?
No questions, but excellent presentation. Jessie, I absolutely loved the curbside pickup, and the picture with the little guys in the car was adorable. It speaks volumes. So, good job.
Thank you.
Great. Jason?
No questions, but just thanks to the library staff for all the work that you put in to make things functional during COVID.
All right, and Jessie, I would echo that. I know that there were several Zoom presentations, different topics and things, and very much appreciated that you continued the interaction that you could in that way. So thank you very much. And we, as much as you, look forward to more hours of open time at the library, but I suspect, just like you said, there will be things that remain, maybe like curbside pickup.
Right, exactly. Yep.
Yep. I think people have gotten used to some things that they're not gonna wanna see changed.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on, but before we do that, I believe we have eight or nine, I think nine UW-Platteville students tonight that are observing for class. So we welcome the nine of you. I think there were nine the last time I counted to this public meeting. And if you did not find it before, and I don't know if Jody lets you know, but the whole agenda and supporting materials are available on the city's website at platteville.org. And then you would look under Council Meetings and find the packet. So if you want to see the information that we'll be discussing, you can find it there, as can anybody else on this Zoom meeting. So the first item then on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action. We have council minutes from April 13th. We have payment of bills. We have appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight I have appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, Bill Kramer and Stacy Strobel. I have an appointment for the Library Board, Kelly Francis, and I have an appointment for the Police and Fire Commission, Tim Bolt. I would remind people that we have several openings on other boards, commissions, and committees. Today, I made contact with lots of people who had previously put in applications. And when I made contact in the last couple of days, I learned that their circumstances have changed, and they're now withdrawing their applications. So please let people know that there are available opportunities for volunteering. We'll move on to licenses. We had one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol as a new packet. We have change of agents for a Class B combination beer and liquor license for Gary to LTLD Platteville, to Ryan Longnecker. This is the business that we know as Pizzeria Uno. We have a change of agent for Class B combination beer and alcohol license for Gary Two Limited, to Nathan Wallenhorst as agent, and this is the business we know as Pizzeria Uno's Annex. We also have a permit in the permit approval for Run Walk for Ben's Hope Awareness on Saturday, September 18th, from 8:00 AM to noon. So those are our consent agenda items. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Isaac to approve the consent calendar as presented. Will vote, Candace?
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
And I don't believe I've seen Klein come in yet, so motion carries.
Okay, and next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. If you are attending this meeting and are interested in a specific agenda item, and I know that there are several people who are, I will call on you at that time. Jody has kindly provided me with a list. I'll call on you at the time of that agenda item. But before that, I would like to allow Eric Flesh, our museum director, to make a couple of announcements. He made contact with me early and asked if he could do so.
Yes, thank you so much, Barb. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to report that Saturday is May 1st, which is the annual reopening of the tour season at the Mining and Rallo-Jamison Museums. This year is a special year of milestone anniversaries for the museum. It is the 50th anniversary of the completion of the Mining Museum. That was back in 1971. The 45th anniversary of the opening of the Bevins Mine in the backyard. That was for the American bicentennial and Platteville sesquicentennial back in 1976. It's also the 40th anniversary of the opening of Rallo-Jamison's museum here in Platteville. And to celebrate those anniversaries and to thank the Platteville community, we are pleased to open, to be offering some lovely initiatives this year, including Community Free Day, which is gonna be on May 1st. So it's this Saturday, and Season Closing Day, which is October 31st, will be free days for members of the community. Because space is limited, we encourage people to register in advance online and reserve your tickets for free admission to the museum, which includes Underground Mine Tour and a train ride and self-guided museum admission. Also, next week, on May 4th, I wanted to remind folks about the Walk Down Main, which is gonna be a hybrid in-person and virtual event this year in partnership with the Platteville Main Street Program. And so $10 is a basic admission that includes the virtual presentation by Platteville historian James Hibbard on Platteville architect Henry Kleinhammer. And so $10 includes the virtual presentation on the 4th and a self-guided walking tour. If you get the full tickets, which is $45 per person or $80 per couple, it also includes a progressive dinner with drinks at the Badger Bar, dinner at Steve's Pizza, and dessert at Three Maria's Ice Cream. All of those buildings, plus an additional 11 in town, are all designed by Henry Kleinhammer and are part of the tour. So thank you so much, and look forward to seeing all of you sometime here at the museums this season.
Okay, so Saturday is May 1st and free day at the museum, so great. All right, we will move on now to...
I would just like to do a little bit of a PSA. I think most everybody is familiar with Wisconsin Badger Camp and the tremendous opportunity that they provide. And I just want to let everybody know that I heard a report today that they are really challenged with finding workers for this summer's camp. So just to ask everybody if, to help spread the word, to make sure that the camp can happen this summer.
And Kathy, I'm sure that that's a... Part of that is doing part to the restrictions in international travel, because they often have international camp counselors, and I would suspect that they won't be having international camp counselors this year. And then they also... My husband used to have this job of recruiting camp counselors for Badger Camp. I also know they used to go to universities and recruit, and that probably didn't happen this year either. So again, help pass the word for Badger Camp.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other reports, reports in the packet. We had Police and Fire Commission. Kathy?
Nothing further to add.
Library Board. Robin isn't here, so... And we heard from Jessie, so we'll move on from the library. Airport Commission. Kathy?
Yeah, nothing further to add.
Community Safe Routes Committee. Jason?
Nothing to add for the 315 meeting, but I believe there'll be additional information presented in later discussion items.
Okay, and the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Jason?
Just that unfortunately, we had another member that had to resign due to other commitments. So again, that's a committee where we have some openings, so we'd love for somebody else to join that committee.
And Jason, that's one of the committees that I called people today that were on the list that said, "Sorry, I can't do it."
Oh, no.
So I've been working on that one, but not very successful today. And by the way, for Candace and Jody and Adam, please make sure and put that... I distributed a memo today with the council appointments to boards to all the council people. Please make sure that that is included in the information. That... I'm not gonna read all those tonight. I didn't think I would ever, but please make sure that they're included in the minutes so that people are aware of who's serving and working with which committee. Okay, let's go on then to our action items, the first of which is 821 Highway Painting. And I believe this is likely to be power.
Yes, thank you. We have an annual contract to paint center lines and other pavement markings on our highways. We intend to repaint Main Street after our Mill and Overlay program. Our base bid was to repaint from Washington Street to the west parking lot driveway for Center of the Arts, and then to repaint Valley Road from Business 151 to Mineral Street. The base bid was a little over $13.5. Alternate A would continue the painting from the CFA driveway to Stonebridge Road. Since we went ahead and approved the Mill and Overlay for that section, we need to award this alternate as a minimum. Alternate B would be to complete the centerline paving, stop bars, the sharrows, and the turn arrows on Main Street between Chestnut and Water. That adds an additional $4,400. Alternate C would have done the outlines of the crosswalk stripes. I'm not sure why it was so expensive, but we have a budget, and if we do alternates A and B, we are under budget at $20,860.5. So our staff is recommending awarding the base with alternates A and B.
Okay. Questions, comments? Isaac?
Howard, would this be for the alternate C for the crosswalks? Would this be something that the street department could do at a later date?
Yes.
Go and paint them themselves, or...
Yes, it would. When we do the painting through these companies, it's an epoxy-based paint that is a multi-year paint, whereas our guys use a water-based paint, which is generally an annual refreshment. So what it means is that our guys will have to continue to refresh that every year. I was hoping that we could get it done and leave it as a multi-year, but not with this.
Sure. But I understand that. Just making sure that it still gets done some way or form here, whether it be by them or by the city staff, so that's all.
Understood. Thank you.
Eileen?
No questions.
Ken?
No question.
Kathy?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions.
And Howard, did you inquire at all of the paint company why it was so much higher? The $26,000?
I did not. I think they're concerned about the handwork, being a lot of handwork close to the decorative crosswalk. I didn't specifically ask. I wasn't gonna go there at this point.
Well, as you make the bid award, I would suggest that you might ask. Maybe they put the decimal point in the wrong place.
Maybe, yes.
I mean, maybe it was simply a typo. I mean, it's just so outstandingly more. $26,000. It's just so much more. It just seems like, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no questions or additional comments, Candace will vote. Oh, we can't vote. We don't have a motion. Pardon me. Do I hear a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Okay?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve contract. I'd make a motion to approve contract 8/21 highway painting with alternate A and B to Century Fence for the bid price of $20,860.05.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Kathy to approve the highway painting contract with a base bid plus alternates A and B. We'll vote. Candace?
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Great. Next on the agenda are the 2020 budget carryovers. And Nicola, I believe this is likely you.
That would be correct. So each year, after we've closed the books and tallied up all the transactions, there sometimes are projects or funds that did not complete or get used in the prior year. And departments may bring forward a request to carry over those funds to complete the project or because they have need of those funds for another project. to complete the project or because they have need of those funds for another project. And so, we assemble those into a list of requests that departments are making to the council to carry over these funds into the current year, into 2021. So, you can see those listed. The first section is CIP projects that did not complete in 2020. And so, we're requesting to carry them into 2021 for completion. And then there are various other funds listed below from the general fund in different departments' requests to carry these funds over to complete a project or to put towards something else. I did highlight the one at the bottom there for $3,025 because it was not on this list at information and discussion. And this is for funding that was in the budget in 2020, in the Communications Outlay Budget. And the Communication Specialist Mac Desktop, which is used for video editing, was purchased earlier this year. And so, those funds would be requested to carry over into 2021 to cover the cost of that Mac Desktop. So, are there any questions about any of that?
Okay, questions? Isaac?
No questions.
Eileen?
No questions.
Ken?
No question.
Kathy?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions.
So, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the carryover of $107,390 in the CIP Fund and $45,893 in the general fund, per the attached schedule.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Eileen. Candace will vote. Janley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes the action items on our agenda tonight. So, we'll move into the items for information and discussion. The first of those is the Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 21 as it relates to subdivision. And so, Joe, we will start with you.
Right, so, as I introduced this at the last meeting, I explained that there's a, basically, it's a comprehensive review of the Chapter 21 subdivision ordinance. But there are some specific topics, I guess, that we were trying to address in there. The conservation subdivision language, that was a project that the Plan Commission worked on to implement. That is a kind of a recommendation that came out of an earlier discussion regarding implementation of the housing study. Then there are changes in there throughout the document related to the sidewalk policy that the council previously adopted. And then there's redundant language that we're eliminating regarding parkland dedication requirements. And then there's several documents that I looked at, model ordinances, ordinances from other communities regarding the processes that are followed, the language that they have in those documents that I thought were much clearer, easier to understand, and more accurate as far as the process that is followed as far as approving subdivisions. So, I incorporated those in there. And the rest, I would say, is just kind of bringing it up to date. This ordinance was in effect way before I got here, so I don't know exactly when it was adopted. But certain things have changed since it was previously adopted. So, I don't know how you want to go through this. We want to go through section by section, or if we want to go council member to council member to see what sections they may have questions or comments on. I'm fine either way.
Well, before that, before we do that, I will, Dave Ralph, who is here, has asked to speak on this topic. And so, I would like Dave to ask his question. Not that we'll be able to answer Dave, but we'll take your comment or question before we get started. And you have to unmute yourself. Dave, look in the lower left-hand corner of your screen and see if you see a little microphone. Still can't hear you.
How about now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. I know that sitting on the Community Safe Routes Committee, not only our committee, but also the planning committee spent months going through this. And while a lot of the issues we covered have been addressed very well, there's maybe a handful that we're hoping, whether it's the council or the committees again, can go back and rework a bit. The first one on my list is to make sure that in this ordinance, it's clearly spelled out that new subdivisions are required, required to have sidewalks unless there's an application for a waiver. And we want, you know, a little bit more work done to make sure this type of document, this ordinance, is easy to understand, not just for develop all cities and the commissions that end up working with it. So, there's a little less gray area for interpretation, whether it's by the administration or whatever. We also would like to see, to include an application for waiver in this ordinance somehow, mention of it or the document itself, and clearly identify the process of whether, you know, what the developers' responsibilities are and the steps A, B, C, and D that they go through with that request to not include sidewalks. And that way, combining those really three elements would hopefully make it much clearer as to what the role of the committees, commissions, developers, administration, and council are to make the whole process a bit speedier and more efficient.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. So, that speaks, I can, I recall our discussion about an application for a waiver that we had in the guidelines or statements we passed on sidewalk. Okay, I don't believe that there's anybody else that has asked to speak on the subdivision ordinance. And I believe all council people and Adam probably got a memo or a letter or a submission from Christina Fields expressing some of her concerns about things that might be needed to be added or missing. So, I, I, I don't know exactly the best way to get through this ordinance. I hesitate to go through it line by line. I think that that would be incredibly time-consuming. And that's one of the reasons we put it on the agenda for several meetings without action, is that so people have a chance, as council people, to go through. And now you've had some other input. So, I think what I'm going to do is ask Isaac, and just go council member by council member. Isaac, as you look at this document and now have heard and read, Kat, do you have suggestions, comments?
I think the only suggestion I would have is that I would agree with Dave would be the fact that if we're going to put in there for the sidewalk situation, there is actually put the document in or a reference to that, not just stating that there is a reference, or excuse me, that there is a procedure, but actually put something in there so that if a developer's from out of town or out of the area, he can go right online easily and find that document to start looking at it when he's looking at the property. So, I think it would just, it would fast stream a couple of things. One thing I do maybe kind of have an issue with is on the one recommendation that was put in there was, there's a couple of spots where, instead of just having say Howard or whoever the current director is doing some of the decision-making, is to add another commission or committee to it. And at some point, you add too many commissions and committees, you get to the point where nothing will get done. You'll be sitting there over and over discussing, excuse me, discuss things, and developers will move on. You know, if it takes too much time, as they say, you know, time's money. You know, they just feel that they're going to have to sit here and go through these commissions consistently. They'll move on to another city or another project. So, we've already seen at this point that Platteville doesn't have, you know, very fast growth as it is. And I'll keep adding things to it, it's going to get slower yet. So, other than that, they'd be about the only two things that Tom had on, so.
Okay. Eileen?
I have nothing to add at this point, no.
Ken?
I have no addition at this time. I need to do a thorough reading. And you say there's something there from Christina Fields about this as well?
Yes, I think there was an email that probably came to your city email, Ken. I would have to look, it was in my city email, and I believe it was to all council people. So, there should be something in your email. We can have a, we can have a copy of that printed, Adam, and sent to you, Ken, too. Because it was an attachment.
Yep, I'll get you a hard copy, Ken.
Okay.
Okay. Kathy?
Um, question for Joe. Under Section 2104 is for procedure. Item C2. No, wrong one, sorry. D, as far as plaques outside the corporate limits. Because we just had an ET meeting. The, there was discussion that plans are going to be updated. I'm only assuming that the township is going to be working on that end as well. Let's see. Just lost my note. As provided by the City of Platteville and Town of Platteville Intergovernmental Planning Agreement. And is that the agreement that is to the point where it needs to be updated? So, would the process be that that agreement's done before this is approved or not?
No. I don't think that's necessary, as long as we refer to that document. And then that document will be approved by the town board and the city council. So, the procedures that would apply in the ET area would be part of that document.
Okay, all right. That was the only question I had at this point. But I also agree with both what Dave and Isaac have added. So, that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, Jason?
Nothing else to add at this time.
Okay, so we have some clarification, Joe, that needs to be done. So, we will not move this to action at the next meeting. Because until you, until we get that clarification within the document relative to the waiver and how to go about that or whatever, let's see another update before we move this to action. So, and that should give people plenty of time, again, to read through it. And it should also give people who want to make comments. And Dave, if you want to send any written comments, you can send them to Adam. He can see that we all get them, or you can send them. So, so anybody who want, who is reading it and says, "I have questions about this." I mean, like Joe said, this has been an ordinance on our books since before he came. So, while it's important to update it, there is no reason it has to be passed yet this month or next month. I mean, if it's been in, Joe, how long have you been with us?
20 years.
All right, if we've used it for 20 years, I think we can use it for 20 years and another month.
Right. I would like to comment about that. You know, the waiver process, just so, in some of the other comments that were in Christina's memo, I think part of it is, there's a little bit of confusion on how she worded some things between the requirements in the zoning ordinance regarding a developer development and the requirements in the subdivision ordinance regarding a developer development. So, you know, so basically, this Chapter 21 is dealing with subdivisions. So, whenever somebody has a parcel of land and they want to divide it into smaller lots that are then developed and turned out for sale for construction of homes or businesses on or whatever. So, you're basically taking a vacant parcel and then developing it. So, that process is what this chapter is outlining. And during that process, it goes to the Plan Commission, it goes to the Safe Routes Committee, it goes to the council, and the council is the one that makes the final decision regarding the approval of that subdivision. So, as part of that process, you know, and there's a development agreement that we typically have with that, that process and those review meetings is when a decision is going to be made whether a sidewalk is required or sidewalk is not required. So, to me, the, they're really, I don't think a waiver process really makes sense because then that's introducing a whole separate process, and that's not really the case. The discussion that takes place during that approval is when the final decision is the, is a sidewalk kind of required on both sides of the street, one side of the street, where is it required, when it's not required. So, I think that is when the decision is going to be made regarding sidewalks. Whereas, you know, in the zoning ordinance, you know, then there's the specific, it's an individual property that is vacant or in its developed or it's redeveloped. That's when there's more of an exception or a variance that would be granted to the sidewalk requirements. So, I think maybe some of the ways she worded some of her comments, I think she's confusing those two ordinances a little bit, so. And I can talk to her directly about that.
Okay, so subdivision ordinance, actually, this subdivision ordinance actually relates to what we would call greenfield development.
For the most part, correct.
Greenfield development. In other words, there's, there's nothing there, and so now it's going to be developed.
Right, so.
These are the guidelines for that development. Versus, this had been something, and the building burned, or it was destroyed, or I bought six lots, or, and now I've taken all of those down, and I'm going to build something else. That's a redevelopment, so that's not a, that's not greenfield. That's, so there's a difference between brand-new development, which is this subdivision, and redevelopment, or, okay.
Right, in the case where you have that redevelopment and, you know, all the infrastructure is in, but it so happens that street does not have a sidewalk along its front edge where they're going to develop, then, you know, the ordinance says you have to put in one as part of the development, or you apply for a waiver or a variance.
But that's really in redevelopment. And what ordinance would that, that would be in the zoning ordinance?
Right, Chapter 22. And so, that's the next step, it's going to the Plan Commission. At their next meeting would be some of these same recommendations from the sidewalk policy will be incorporated into Chapter 22. And then that's, now we're going back through the process similar to this with Chapter 22.
Okay.
So, some of her comments, I think we do need to take a look at some of those. But I just think there, the way she had some of her comments worded, I think there was some confusion between those two.
So, the difference between greenfield development and really redevelopment or reuse. Okay. All right, well, again, we will not put this on for action at the next meeting, which is in, I believe, is May 11. So, it'll be later in May. All right. Next contract, so, Joe, we won't be noticing a public hearing for...
As you said that, I'm trying to remember if I already said it to the paper. I don't remember offhand.
All right, well, hopefully we'll get that straightened out. Okay, contract, well, let's move on then to, and house members, if you guys have any questions, please get to Joe or to Adam so that we can, at the next meeting in May, have kind of a clean copy that we'll go from, so we can, so Joe can schedule the public hearings then on this ordinance. So we can, so Joe can schedule the public hearings then on this ordinance for the second meeting in May, which would be May twenty fifth. Okay, let's go on then to contract six dash twenty one sidewalk repair. And Howard, this is you, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Um, we also have our annual repair, uh, for sidewalks, the contract for sidewalk repair. Uh, part of it is for grinding or sawing the high spots. And the other is for full replacement of the different slabs, individual slabs. We sent it out to multiple firms, we received three bids. Uh, one from ASTI Sawing is for sawing only. The other two bidders, Foreigner Asphalt and Ogelli Concrete submitted bids for sawing and slab replacements. Um, ASTI Sawing is the low bidder for the sawing, uh, and under our uh, projected budget, uh, they did the sawing last year and they've done it in previous years have done good work. Ogelli Concrete is a low bidder for slab replacement. Um, when combined with the sawing, uh, it's under budget as well. Um, Ogelli has not done this particular contract, however, they've done our, uh, concrete work on many of our other uh, full street reconstruction contracts, uh, to include Bradford and Irene last year. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with their work. Um, the, uh, normal one in town that we've used in the past, uh, they've decided to retire, so. Um, so we wish them luck and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll continue with everything, so. Uh, we'll recommend awarding for the sawing to ASTI Sawing. And replacement of the slabs to Ogelli Concrete.
Okay, Isaac, any questions?
Um, kind of a, a, a kind of a game question, how is this bid so cheap on the grinding compared to the other two, it's you know, we're half, we're half price on one of them and just over half, you know, so, any particular reason or just? I mean, I understand that you could work, but they've, you know, worked in town before, so.
Um, that's all that these guys do.
Um, okay.
For, for Foreigner and, and Ogelli, that's kind of a side thing that they do.
Okay.
Eileen, any questions?
No questions.
Ken?
No question.
Kathy?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions.
Okay, then we'll move this along for action at our next meeting. Okay, the next agenda item are the Alliant Smart Poles. And, uh, for this discussion, I believe we're welcoming two, uh, additional folks from uh, Alliant, and that would be Troy Pitts. Troy, I thought I saw you somewhere on my screen.
Yeah, I'm on there again.
Yeah, there you are, okay, Troy is on. And I also believe Jeff Adams is here from your group, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so Jeff and, uh, Troy are here and Adam, I believe, uh, is probably uh, oh no.
I.
Howard.
Okay, I wrote the, I wrote the memo, um, but, um, Alliant Energy, uh, has met with the staff, uh, and we included, uh, Director of Main Street to look at, uh, installing smart poles as a living laboratory for testing new concepts, uh, specifically on Main Street. Uh, between, uh, uh, Chestnut and Water and on Second Street between, uh, Maine and Furnace. Um, we, they have different capabilities on them. Uh, and included in here is, uh, a draft agreement, uh, they would change the tops of forty seven poles and, uh, uh, they would remove and replace eight poles. Uh, with new poles, they will be in s- similar styles to what we have. Uh, and this would be for a ten-year pilot program. Um, so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Troy and Jeff, they have a uh, presentation, uh, that they, they wanted to, uh, do. Um, I believe we have copies of the presentation in your packet as well.
Okay, uh, Troy or Jeff?
I'm gonna try and share my screen here. Can anybody see that?
No, Jody. Jody, Troy is trying to share his screen, has he enabled to share a screen?
It's enabled.
Okay.
Okay. It's basically just a four slide PowerPoint. If I can't get it up there, I can just go through it. I think you all have it in your packet. I've been having some troubles with my computer also. Let me try one more time here. Anything yet?
No, just you, Troy.
Okay, sorry about that, but, you know, I think it was in all your packets, it was just a four slide presentation there, uh, talking about our smart community, street lighting project. And what we're doing this for is we're working actually with Epri on it to collect data in these communities for sustainability, um, kind of, uh, for innovative thinkers out there and consumers, you know, to try to figure out what new services may may be helpful down the road for these communities for street lighting and things of that nature. And we're doing this, it's kind of a living lab, so it, it's a pilot pro- program where we'll provide basically all the upfront capital, you know, to put the lights in, uh, put the different, uh, capabilities on each one and we'll work with the city down the road to find out if you know, what all they want on here. And we've worked a little bit with Howard and Adam and, and the group to talk about, uh, wifi capabilities, uh, cameras, uh, that support the police department, especially on Second Street. Uh, some poles that have changeable message banners on them, things of that nature, so. Uh, find, to find out what the community actually wants and, and it, and it for us, we can find out down the road. You know, whether this is something that's gonna be viable down the road for our communities to use. And for, for Platteville, it's, it's basically like Howard said in there, it's gonna show that they're kind of a leader in innovation here. Sustainability, because we will, we'll be able to dim these lights and, and, uh, if there's an outage, it'll go back to us, we'll be able to find out and have less, uh, road counts as far as, uh, bringing out trucks to, to find out where it is, it'll tell us exactly where lights are out and things of that nature. And also find some pain points for your community. You may find out down the road that you do want some other, you know, weather stations in there or, uh, you know, push blue out there for if, for at night on maybe some of the areas that are a little darker, things of that nature, so. It's, it's things that we can add on and take off as we go through this pilot program. And as Howard said, it's gonna be a ten-year pilot program. Uh, Epri, I believe, is gonna collect the data for at least two to three years, but we're setting it up for ten years. At the end of that time, we can do one of two things, or one of three things, we can either extend the program for another couple of years. Uh, to both of our satisfaction, or the city can ask us to remove the poles. And put back what was there, or, uh, we'll turn the poles over to the city and they can own them. But upfront, we'll provide the poles and the, uh, the pole tops and at no cost to the city and they will just, uh, then we'll also work with, uh, the police department, things on the camera there, but they'll, they'll have everything they want for that, so. Um, we're hoping that, uh, this shows that, that commu- that Platteville community is innovative and, uh, they wanna capture the voice of their citizens out there to see what are some of the other, uh, anomalies that they may want on a pole in the future. So that's where we're at on that, uh, the, we did have a roles and responsibilities meeting with with Adam and Howard and the group there a couple of weeks ago, so we do have a few to-do items on that. I think Howard passed that out to you. I don't think you wanna go through that tonight, but, uh, what I'd like to do is, is kind of open it up for questions or Jeff, Jeff Adams, our project manager on this. Is there anything you wanna add, Jeff?
No, Troy, I, um, you've covered all and also the maintenance. If there's a light out or there's, uh, any issues, um, we'll be, Alliant will be there. Probably with a third-party contractor to affect any repairs or issues that may arise, um, with these poles and or luminaires. So that's not even, that's not the responsibility, uh, the city of Platteville either.
Okay, Troy, before I open it up for questions or anything, I also want to acknowledge that Bob Hunthausen has joined us tonight. And Bob is currently the president of Building Platteville, I understand. And, um, some of us who have been in Platteville for a long time recall that it was Building Platteville that, uh, organized a campaign uh, to raise money from local citizens to put in the light poles, the decorative light poles that extend, uh, and I'm not, I'm not sure that all of them came with private money. But actually extend from the corner of Hickory and Maine to the top of, uh, to the museum. Um, so, and I don't recall how many, but many of those poles, if you're downtown and if you happen to be listening, please understand that we certainly do appreciate those donations and this is not, uh, a uh, not intended to, uh, decrease the value of the donation in the past. So Bob, I don't know if there's anything particular on behalf of Building Platteville that you'd like to say before we have this discussion, and I'm not sure even all council members were aware that there were private donations that funded many of these poles.
Yeah, um, Barb, uh, I've, uh, just recently become president of Building Platteville. I've been in Building Platteville for four years, but, um, uh, Kathy Kopp is the previous president of Building Platteville and, uh, has much more knowledge on these, uh, private donations for these poles than I do at this point, so I, I'd like to defer to Kathy if I could.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay, um, the, I was part of the fundraising process for the, um, existing light poles. And I wanna say that was when Main Street was reconstructed, I believe in two thousand and eight. And, um, I guess the, the, um, I, I don't I would assume because I'm, I'm a personal donor, um, of at least one of those lights. That the, the, the real only issue is that certain pole, any of the poles that were, that received significant donations have brass plaques on them. And it would, I would say that, um, as long as those brass plaques were replaced and put on the new poles. And because there was maybe a question of maybe just moving the whole pole with the plaque. That I would have to go back through the records, but a number of the donors requested a certain pole for historical reference or whatever. Um, so if that would be a possibility, um, I don't think, um, that, uh, on behalf of Building Platteville that, um, the donors would probably have any issue. We're upgrading. And as long as, I mean, I'm not gonna go down there and hug my old pole. Um, and I don't think anybody else would either. Um, and I don't think, they're, they're small plaques, um, and so I don't know, I, I would assume that would be possible to take them off and on the poles that are going, uh, the, the new ones that would be placed on there. Um, and then I, I saw that, that may, though, some of those poles that are going to be removed would be moved to Second Street and to possibly to City Park. And again, in City Park, Building Platteville was the fundraising group that raised the money for the light poles that are currently in the center of the park that also have plaques on them. They are not, they're not bronze, they're, they're brass. Um, so if, um, I just wanna raise the awareness that if the decision is made to move those poles and reutilize them, that the plaques go, stay where they're at.
Alright.
I, I, I don't see any issue with that at all.
Okay, so Kathy, you're saying the donors that gave for the, the lights in the downtown, gave for lights in the downtown. And as long as the plaques remain in the downtown, it, it, it doesn't matter if the light pole is changed. The important thing is to continue to recognize donors that support the downtown, eh, in the downtown.
Right.
So, uh, Adam, uh, Howard, I think you hear that loud and clear and, uh, Troy and Jeff, I think that you've heard that here also, so. Now, uh, we'll move on to questions or comments from council people as it relates to these, this, uh, uh, proposal. A- a- as soon as Troy, you keep saying Epri, could you, Epri, is that what you're key, saying? So, so what is Epri? What is that?
Do you wanna handle that? Jeff, you'll tie in with that a little better.
Epri is a, um, exactly what the acronym stands for, it's Research Institute, like for utilities and, and others. And Epri's involvement here, from a governmental perspective, uh, they're, they want to, they're uh, interested in energy potential savings, so we're putting LED lights, uh, LED banners, uh, the cameras, there's going to be, um, the hundred and twenty volt double poles outlets will be replaced. But one thing we don't, you know, you can say we save X by doing Y, but without any evaluation and measurement of these pieces of equipment, it's all theoretical. So what Epri does is they'll, they'll come in and, and put some sub-metering, uh, on the separate circuits. Studied over a couple of years, so when they write a white paper for other communities and such, you can save X, Y, and Z based on measured evaluated data. And that, and we work with, uh, we work with Epri, um, Ace and Point is our, our solar lab at, at our main facility, and that was in partnership with Epri as well. How do you, how do you, um, how do you calculate efficiencies of solar panels? We've got different types of manufacturers, we got different types of, um, photocell types. And they're in different positions and some are pivoting, some are stationary. So it's, it's a, it's a national study, what Epri does, and they work with utilities for these type of studies. And then that data will help them and help other utilities to consider, um, being as progressive as you know, Platteville is it now, other cities are going, well, how do I know what I don't know? Well, give us a little bit of time and we're gonna be able to substantiate why X, Y, and Z, these dollar savings. Uh, so that's what Epri does on a national level.
Okay, alright.
We're also tied in with them up, up on, uh, college too, we're gonna be doing a little work with, uh, UW Platteville down the road too, and, and Epri will be working with that also.
Okay, okay, Isaac, questions, comments?
Alright, so, yeah, so I was reading through proposal, which I think is a good proposal here, um, as for the cost. When we're looking at the polls, it states that, um, WPL will be responsible for the cost of the, the polls themselves, et cetera, but as for the removal of the bases and installation, new bases, wiring, that, that's on the community. What is the estimated cost per pole on one of these on, say, the city of Platteville in this case?
There, we're retrofitting, uh, the eight new bases, eight new poles coming in. Um, we've got the bolt circles from the original engineering drawings when you guys did this. So when the new poles come in, they're just gonna be sitting on the existing bases in. And I, this is the first time I heard that these poles would be reused, so that's great. So there's no, there's, the wiring's already in place. So it's just reconnecting the new lights to.
Okay, I guess I was just reading through like on, in, in the one paragraph, I was just reading, you know, point five, six, and seven were had for the community shell at sole cost and expense. So that's where I was getting at there, but if you're saying that we reuse the bases that are there, you know, so we're not destroying any of the current concrete.
Nope.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we took measurements, Howard sent us the, the old poles that were there and gave us the measurements. So we're crafting the new poles to fit right on those bolts.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay, Eileen?
You, you mentioned eight poles, but forty some tops. So what, does this extend from Hickory Street to, I don't know, the museum or where is the parameter of this proposal?
It goes from Water Street up to Chestnut Street on Main Street. And then it'll go Second Street down to, I believe Furnace. So we won't be going all the way up to the to the museum.
Or the museum. So it's just the prime, yeah, so what's the forty-six tops? Is that what you asked, Eileen?
We can use.
Yeah, about the top.
We'll just change out the, we'll change out the luminaires, but we'll leave the existing poles there. And we did talk about earlier with Howard and Adam about the signage on the poles that were there that we would be moving. So at first we had looked at possibility of having all poles moved. We thought we really don't need that. Up on the luminaire on the top is, is where all basically the smart components are. So we can change that out on the existing poles. The eight poles we're changing out are going to have a few more components on them and more options.
I see, okay, thank you.
Ken?
Well, I had a question really for Kathy Kopp. I remember a cost of fourteen dollars for each pole that was donated.
That was fifteen hundred, never again.
About five hundred. Okay. So they told us that the eight poles will be saved and possibly reused. I agree with that and leave the plaques fine. So I have no particular comment against this project. Thank you.
Kathy?
Um, I'm, I'm a couple of questions. I think it's a, it's a phenomenal idea. How, when you say wifi, what is it going to, how is it going to benefit wifi? Is it if you're on the sidewalk or is it something internal that's working some other way? That, that and the, the cameras, I'm particularly interested in because I think that, that we really need that. And I think that's really a good idea. But mostly my question is the wifi, what, what is going to help wifi with that?
It's not, it's not wifi as, as we, as we understand wifi on your phone or 5G, 4G wifi. The wifi is the communications for the, the poles themselves between their poles. They're communicating with each other, yeah. So I, I know it's, it's, it's confusing and I had the same question when the first time I laid eyes on this as well. So you're not alone, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Yep.
And how about the cameras? You wanted to, didn't you say something about the cameras too, Kathy?
Yeah, it's just that I'm assuming it's, it's going to work with the police department. Is that the purpose of the cameras? I'm assuming, okay.
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
Okay, Jason?
Nothing additional at this time.
Okay. Um, I don't have any other questions, I think they've all been answered. Bob, thanks for joining us and Kathy, thank you for adding to that discussion. When I first heard about this, I immediately said to Adam, we have another issue here we have to talk about. Adam, as new to town, had no idea that these poles had been donated. But we, we, we have a very giving community and people who want to see things get done and have nice things in town. And so we thank, we thank our donors and we will continue to honor those donors as we move through this project. So Bob and Kathy, don't be concerned about that. So, but, and thank you again for the information. So Adam, I, I assume this will be moved to action for the next meeting. Okay, all right, that's the Alliance Smart Poles. Next, we have the ATV, UTV ordinance and route designation. And I believe this is likely to be done.
I took his, I took his staff note from last time and used a lot of it and made some changes.
So it's not his staff note?
It's, it's, it's partly his, but mostly mine now. We, we had the trial ordinance in 2018 and 19. And then we passed the enclosed ordinance 20-01 permitting ATVs, UTVs year round from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM on designated routes. Those routes were expanded from the original trial ordinance. Recently, members of the local ATV, UTV club asked the city to consider expanding the routes to all but a few select streets as designated on the enclosed map. If you see it, it's, all the red routes would be the ones that would be prohibited, are recommended to be prohibited and all the green ones are recommended for opening. And primarily, the red routes that are, that are on here are south and, south of Business 151, specifically the Knollwood and Oak Haven subdivisions, Pleasant Valley, Enterprise Drive, and then those areas east of the Roundtree Branch, you know, of, by Valley Road, Business 151, East Mineral Street and all the routes out there by the industry park. The other ones on the north end of town are outside the city's jurisdiction. The specifically Highway 80, north of Northside Drive and those little subdivisions off to the east from there. And then the other one that the club is recommending not to open to ATVs, UTVs is Second Street between Pine and Furnace Street. So what we have, this did go to the Safe Routes Committee last week. The Community Safe Routes Committee recommends that the expansion not be granted with a vote of three to one and one abstention. As far as I can tell, others who were there may expand on this. Some of the rationale that the Community Safe Routes gave for not recommending the expansion are that ATVs, UTVs are not recommended for on-road use. That's one of the arguments that has been used in the past. Another is state legislature has not corrected a loophole in the law. Because right now, certain moving offenses for an ATV, UTV are under the jurisdiction of DNR and not under the jurisdiction of DOT. Safe Routes is meant to look out for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. And members believe that that would be contrary to that charter. And some would also believe that certain neighborhoods should be given the opportunity to put their opinions together as to whether or not they want to have ATVs, UTVs in their neighborhood. There's the one member who voted against the motion or in favor of the expansion basically did so on the grounds that the worst fears of the opponents have not happened in the two and a half, almost three years since, since we started the trial. Any signage would be supplied by the ATV, UTV clubs. And we have a draft ordinance that's under review by staff and the attorney, basically adjusting the designated routes, basically saying all except the listed streets are approved for the use of ATVs, UTVs. Also included in the enclosures are the police report of incidents involving ATVs, UTVs since the trial ordinance. Doug can explain in more detail, but there were like forty-one or two incidents and the vast majority of them, twenty-eight, I believe it was, were for violations of ATVs off the designated routes.
Doug, do you want to comment, please?
Howard's, Howard's right about the nature of the context. They've largely been for people off route, a few for being on the routes after the hours that, of closure at 10:00 PM. Most of those were probably in the, during the time of the trial ordinance.
And this is simply, this is limited to changing the routes, not changing the time.
Correct.
So the time would remain, can be on the roads between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. But this is a request for a route expansion. Okay, there are several people in the audience tonight who are here. At least there are several people who registered. I don't actually see some of these people, but Tony Steinhardt registered to be here. I don't see Tony or anybody that says he's, that they're Tony. Chad Dickman registered and would like to speak and I don't see Chad either.
He's here under a name of Molly for some reason.
Okay, so he's under the name of Molly, okay. Kurt Timlin also registered to attend the meeting, I don't see him here. He did not ask to speak. Christina Fields registered to, for the meeting. I believe she has sent or received a memo from Christina, a personal memo about comments about the proposed opening of streets to ATVs and UTVs. Evan is, Evan Larson is here about ATVs and UTVs and he has requested to speak. Dave Ralph is here also for ATVs and UTVs and has requested to speak. And Adam, I believe you received a letter from Cindy Peng that she would like read because she couldn't be here. And I don't know if she copied everyone or just copied you. So before we go any farther, I guess we'll let these folks speak. So Dave, you're first on my screen when I look across.
Oh, it's nice to know I'm up there with you, Barb.
You're right up on the top of the
Gotcha.
heap tonight.
Should take a picture of the screen. For me, this is kind of my Nikita Khrushchev moment where I should be pounding my shoe on the podium. But that's, you know, one of the problems with these virtual meetings. It doesn't have as much impact online. I, I don't know, I, I mean, I don't have any problems with what the ATV, UTVs, you know, have, have done. I think the police department has done an outstanding job really of reminding, you know, the operators that they're after hours, they're off the route, things like that. But the thing that just continually overwhelms me is that the manufacturers of these vehicles, everywhere I go on their websites, it says they're designed for off-road use. And to me, a street or an alley is not off-road. In some places, I think it's even the Wisconsin Department of Transportation says that the traction is the problem on the streets. Whether they can't stop, whether they can't maneuver in time. I, I didn't find that. But even the ATV Safety Institute, their guideline is to never ride on paved roads except to safely cross a paved road when allowed to do so by law. Only ride on designated trails at safe speeds. It was my understanding that we would provide a limited number of these routes through the city so they could get from trail to trail. And that's fine, but to my knowledge, there aren't any trails within our city limits designed for ATVs and UTVs. Period, end of lecture.
Thank you, Dave. Evan, you're next on my screen.
Okay, well, thank you everybody and thanks for sharing time. I appreciate having this conversation again. So I'm speaking to ask the council to reject the expansion of the UTV, ATV routes. I want to say that I can totally understand if you own one of these vehicles and you, you want to drive them, especially from your house, I get it. I will remind the committee that, or the, the council that, you know, we talked about this a lot last year. I don't remember how many meetings. I shared some maps and we talked about how the cities that are being used as comparisons to say this is fine. Platteville has a different layout and it has a different demographic. And so I feel like we came to a compromise last year or a year and a half ago when we established the current ordinance. And I also want to acknowledge that it feels like we also just talked about this pretty recently because this last year has been unusual. As you can look across your Zoom screen and recognize, yes, it's very unusual, which means that our current ordinance has never been through what we'll call a normal year. And so I would encourage the council to consider that when they think about changing something that hasn't actually kind of governed over a, a time that is more representative of use. I'd also like to point out that with the argument that, you know, the worst fears haven't occurred. You could just as easily argue that the worst of our worst fears haven't occurred because of the ordinance. And so I just want to point out that that's a false argument. Because you can't, you can't say that nothing would have happened if the ordinance wasn't in place. And so I just want to urge you to think about that as a justification for, again, changing something. But I think more importantly, what I also want to talk about is when we went through this last time, it was really incredible to see how many people were engaged. There were a lot of people that spoke on both sides and sometimes people got really heated and upset. And it was obviously a lot of emotions on both sides. And the, the decision that the council came to didn't make anybody happy. Because there are people that are saying no trails at all and there are people that are saying the whole city. And so as, as somebody who kind of watched a lot As as somebody who kind of watched a lot of this play out, I think that the current ordinance actually. Does a very good job of compromising between different perspectives and that you as council are charged with representing our city. And that an all or nothing approach doesn't do that. And so um. So I want to raise that point and just say that, you know, looking at the expansion, I know it's not every street. But it's a lot and it feels like the original or the 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 routes that we have right now. Connect the trails to the businesses. It lets people go through a town. That was the argument. I feel like this is a compromise. I will point out ATV, UTVs are not designed for our streets. The streets are not designed for these vehicles. And so. Everything right now is already special consideration for people who own these vehicles. It's already the city stepping beyond what these things are designed to do to accommodate people who have a real and sincere interest. And and are important members of the community. I want to chime in on Dave's comment that. I feel like part of this is a really unfair conversation that we should be having. I looked up Polaris again, Isaac, I know, I know, but I'm from Minnesota. Fourth quarter of twenty twenty, their profits were five hundred and fifty-five million dollars at a twenty-five point five percent rate. I think it's really unfair for people who are making that much money to push these kind of conversations onto cities. We don't have the money and staff to say. Is this safe? Um, I would really encourage um ATV, UTV enthusiasts to engage in the people who are making these vehicles. Make a case, um, develop modifications for the vehicles so they meet safety standards or do the testing. The quantitative and objective testing to make sure that they are actually safe. At that point, let's have the conversation of opening up the streets. I feel like we run with anecdotes because that's all we have because of who we are. This is a bigger question. And so. With all of that said, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I think our current routes are very much a product of compromise, and I think that that's really important, especially in a time when things can get so polarized. Um, nobody got everything they wanted, but everybody got something with the current ordinance. And I think that that. Reflects really well on the council and the community. And so with that. I will say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Evan. Uh, next Chad, you had asked to speak.
Hi Barb, and uh. Can you hear me? All right, um, thanks again for uh letting us do this trial period, which uh started back in two thousand eighteen. I think so far, um, with it being a trial, it's everything is gone uh good. Uh, just a few incidents on the police report that we uh. Have in front of you guys. Um, the biggest reason that we are bringing this up. Um, is to help the residents of the city get on the routes. It's not really helping anybody that is outside of town. It's more for the people that are living in town. Get out onto the routes that are outside of town. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. That's. One of the main reasons to even bring this up to you guys again is for um that purpose. Um, the second thing is, um, looking at the incident report, you can see, um, you know, from two thousand eighteen. Nineteen and twenty, we are trending down in the number of incidents. And the number one issue is being off route, you know, and that can be from. Us not explaining it to people enough or uh people not understanding exactly what the routes are and sometimes maybe missing a sign. Or the fact that um. You know, they're like, so they get they get off route and they just they don't know how to get back on type of thing. So. What we've seen is other cities have like Lancaster started with a trial. They went to a full open um and haven't seen the issues. Um, of being off route, obviously. Um, so it took the uh. Took the number of calls down that the police department was seeing. Um, and really focuses on actual issues, which we really are not seeing any of the any of the issues. Um, that seem to be brought up every time, um, you know, about, you know, not being the same rules and stuff like that. That need to be adhered by. Um, on that note, you know, out in Grant County and town of Platteville. They uh have the same rules where, you know, as far as any opening talks, stuff like that is the same as the city. So we're all in this together. We want people out there riding safe. Um, we're just basically looking to be able to have it. So I have a lot of people that are in town. Or have family members in town. They're like, well, I wish I could ride in there and go to their house for a birthday party or whatever. And just gaining access. Um, as far as the signage. I would recommend, and I talked to Howard about this, leaving the designated routes up. That way the people that are going through town would follow the routes and go out and not be just driving through the neighborhoods. Um, really, the only reason to be on these other routes is to gain access or, you know, somebody to visit somebody. So that's the main reason that we're bringing it up. Um, I appreciate how much time has been put into this. With the community and with uh the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Uh, Adam, would you like to read Cindy's letter?
Sure, um, so her email reads, my name is Cindy Tang. I live at nine ninety-five. Uh, Highbury Circle in Platteville. I am in favor of the proposal to expand street ATVs and UTVs. Um, are allowed on in Platteville. I do not own or ride UTV slash ATVs, but I've been pleased with how the initial introduction of them unlimited streets went. I support the rights of this group of citizens as I support bikers, walkers, and people that use electric bikes. I encourage you to approve this proposal. Thank you, Cindy Tang.
And Jason, I saw that you had posed some questions. Uh, relative to ATVs, UTVs and things, so would you like? And I believe you and Adam have been back and forth with those, so. Would you like to make comments or do you have further clarification or? Where do you stand with your questions? Because you actually put them in writing.
Um, I think one question was just um wanting to know what the efforts of the ATV, UTV club have been. In terms of education of routes, seeing as that is the 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 most frequent violation of the ordinance. Also. Um, I know when this all started, one of the big arguments that um. That was um proposed was that it was, you know, this is going to be good for tourism. It's going to bring in lots of tourism dollars. It's going to bring people in. From outside of Platteville. And um, I know that that's been an area that has been lacking in terms of having data. And um, I also, th- this last one, um, the last revision. I believe the the current routes have provided access for people out of town to get into town. Um, if not, I would be willing to um look at that. As well in terms of if there's any other routes that, you know, people outside of town are not able to access to get. To our to our community to spend money at the businesses. It seems like that um. That has kind of fallen off the wayside. I don't hear much about the tourism um component of this anymore and just wondering. It seems like the shift now has gone to, okay, what what is going to be convenient for people in town? And so I had a question in terms of what the club is doing to encourage tourism and encourage. People from out of town to bring money into our town. I don't know, was there anything else, Adam, that I had? I had put questions on. Oh, and then the other one was, you know, what what do we need to do? Potentially maybe as a council or together with the ATV, UTV club to start to put pressure on the state and the DOT. Excuse me, to to start handling this issue and start um developing and and. Coming up with regulations that that are similar to a lot of the the other vehicles that are on the road. Um, I feel like that should have been done from the beginning and it's been a frustration of mine. Since the beginning and I really want to know how we can push that. In order to kind of have a a a standard that the entire state. You know, all the municipalities can can follow and one that really meshes with. You know, the type of vehicles that the these are and um that we're we're meeting as many safety standards. And and having all of that um figured out as well.
So Chad, do you speak on behalf of the club or are you the club? Leader? I I don't really know.
Uh, Barb, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, I'm the I'm the president of the Platteville ATV, UTV and the Platteville Drift Buster Snowmobile Club.
Okay.
So I, yes, I am speaking on behalf of our club and our members.
So did you hear Jason's questions about tourism and? Uh, education and promotion and.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, would you like to speak to that?
Um, as far as uh the money tourism, um. That is going to be really hard. I don't know if the state breaks that down. Um. You know, I don't I don't know how anybody keeps track of it. We don't. You know, people don't say, hey, I rode in on an ATV. We're riding in street clothes, so. It's pretty hard. It's not like snowmobilers where you come in, you take your helmet, your coat off. Everybody knows that you're snowmobiling. Um, so they know that that's how you got there. You know, we look just like anybody getting out of a car. So unless we walk into a place and say, hey, I rode here on an ATV. Most people aren't going to know as a business owner if that person in fact was on an ATV. Um, as far as the uh education of the club, um, that's what we're continually doing. Um, and self policing by uh talking to our members. We we have rides that we do and that's where we spread the word on, you know. This is what times you can ride and stuff. This is where you can go. Make sure you're not screwing up these rules so we can keep our routes open. It's just like what we do for the snowmobile club. We're going across other people's land. And if they don't like what we're doing, they don't let us through. So it's the same philosophy on that as it is on these routes that. You know, the education is upfront. It's not seen by you guys because we don't. We don't have a meeting saying, hey, we did, we did this safety thing, but um. We are always actually actively looking at, you know, what can be done to promote. You know, that's why, you know, I checked with Wayne, like you have the updated maps down at the chamber. I want to make sure that you have them. If you need any more, let me know so we can get them out, you know, when people stop by there. So um. Next week, I believe it is uh Monday, we're going to be meeting down at the chamber. Um. Um, he won't Wayne wanted to know if the we could bring some ATVs. To uh give people rides to do the poker run through the businesses. So, you know, that's another way for. Getting other people to know that, hey, these can be used here and uh where they can be used at because some of the businesses can't be accessed by it. So. That's basically what we've we've been doing for training. Uh, as far as the rule changes with with uh DNR. And stuff like that, um. That'd be a long hill to climb to get stuff changed at the state level. Um, you know, we. That would take years to get anything done as far as change with that. The problem with DNR is. Like boats, ATVs, everything is combined into one global thing, so. For them to change UTVs, they would have to change their whole thing. So. We saw tonight, you know, what is being done on your end to change the subdivision ordinance. And how much time that has been involved in trying to get that changed. It would be, you know, immensely more to do something at the state level. Not that it can't be done, but to get something changed. Uh, at that level, I guess. So.
Okay, Jason. Are you good with your questions now?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So correct me if I'm wrong. This is. This argument has gone from we want to bring in tourism dollars and that being the focus to. Now what is going to be most convenient for the people that are living in the city? Is that kind of the argu- is that the the switch to um the the current argument?
Am I still on here?
Yep.
Um, it goes hand in hand, I guess. Um, if you don't have access to leave from your house, you're not going to use it. So. Um, it might not directly impact the city of Platteville, but it could also. Impact the neighboring communities. Um, so it 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 goes hand in hand. I mean. I don't know how else to explain it.
So it would be tourism for other, it would be helping boost tourism for other cities. Allowing people in Platteville to have access, like full access to the roads so they can get out of town.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we are a ga- we are a gateway. There's a lot of people that come through Platteville or out of Iowa that are snowmobilers. And ATV ears. They go hand in hand. You know, you rode dirt bikes and stuff as well. So anytime you can bring somebody else into town. Um, as another gateway, you're going to help the businesses. Um, most of the time, people are wanting to go get something to eat. Um, that's that's the biggest thing.
Don't we already have access for people to come into Platteville out from out of town? And the current routes, I believe, hit most of the places to eat.
Correct.
Okay.
But we have people living in town that want to get to the businesses that they can't unless they. At home. So I guess.
Can they take another vehicle or? Can they use another vehicle?
It is a convenience.
People, is the ATV the only mode of transportation that these people have?
I don't know. I don't know what people have for transportation.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Isaac. Comments, questions?
I'll start off with trying to answer some of Jason's questions first. So as for the continue the tourism, as Chad kind of elaborated. It's it's hard to say exactly what dollar it brings in, just kind of like the walking trail when it's built is supposed to bring people in as well for tourism. It's tough to say exactly what dollar per dollar that brought in. But I can tell you that the Chamber of Commerce and the City Platform as well as the. They received a letter. The Grant County Tourism have both stated that the ATV, UTV routes in our area are pretty much. The hottest item that are asked for. Uh, people call and they want to know, do they have more maps that they can get or get them sent to you to them? So as well as with the the chamber and the Grant County Chamber. The club has a um a Facebook page and some other stuff that we're constantly getting. Private messages or messages to us. Where would you stay at? Where would you eat? Where would you get gas? So I'm 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 a member of the club as well as also I'm the um the secretary at this time. So myself, Chad, and Tony Steinhardt are continuously sending out messages and phone calls, letting people know where they should stay at, eat. The best routes, where the routes are and um the timeframes. As for the policing. You know, you can look at the numbers and last year. Some some item or I would say some fati- some. Let's say some activities may have had a slowdown or a lower rate of what people did. The ATV, UTV was not one of them. That was one of the items that people were able to go out and do. Hence another six percent in registration numbers over the previous year. Um, you know, this is even with people sometimes having to wait five to six months just to get a machine because um they weren't able to get one. I went back and looked at the the numbers for the police statistics and just off the top of my head without going through my notes. I can see where I personally was the caller on five of those last year. Um, because I would see a UTV or an ATV off the route. That wasn't supposed to be on there. If I couldn't get a hold or catch up to them or stop them, I'd call the police department. And three of them were, one was one household. Um, in two thousand twenty, it was just one. One younger kid just continuously, he just didn't care, you know, so we. We kept after him, you know, we stopped, knocked on the doors ourselves. We called the police department ourselves. We talked to his parents itself. So we're continuously looking at, you know, at that as well, not lea- The police department. Club member. Everybody that's in our town here has young children. And a couple of us even have grandchildren. Um, I know one of the other complaints or people think about is that they're a loud machine. Um, all the council people were given a. She paid for that state of what the uh, you know, noise compared to a a car, a truck, a motorcycle I sent out. Um, as you can see right in there, there's cars, motorcycles, and those aren't semis or farm equipment. Those are the ones that are louder than what a UTV is. Um, as like anything else, you'll have your exception. There'll be, there will be a couple that are louder than what should be. But that's same with a truck, a car, a motorcycle, fourth floor. The DNR does have posted on there that, you know, nothing louder than I believe is ninety decibels. At least they have a limit, you know, vehicles. At least they have a limit, you know, vehicles. I have yet to be able to find on the DOT site where they limit how loud it can be. I mean, I know the police department can say, you know, it's too loud, you can get a vehicle, you can get a, a noise violation for that, but I couldn't actually find the number. Um, as for the people in town, you know, once this has gotten going, you know, we constantly hear from people that live within the city that either have these or would like to get one. You know, I would buy one of these if I can go right from, right from my house. Uh, whether it be riding in town or going to other communities and spending money, at least getting outside and doing some activities. Um, some of these machines can cost up to thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. So, um, you know, they're spending money in taxes. They're spending money on gas, just like everybody else is. You know, then there was the argument that, you know, they don't pay a wheel tax. Well, either do motorcycles don't pay wheel taxes, scooters don't pay wheel taxes in town. I mean, um, trailers, certain vehicles don't pay. So, you know, it's kinda give or take on that one there. Um, you know, we've seen the numbers from two thousand nineteen just in the city of Platteville come down to two thousand twenty for violations. The sad say that most of those were off route. One thing we have not seen, and this is statewide, again, you know, another years went by and I've been able to find a incident within a city street or road of an accident involving an ATV to be with a vehicle, a house, a pedestrian, um, another ATV or UTV. Maybe on the country there are, but within a city or a town, you know, on a city street or road, we haven't been able to find one cuz there hasn't been any. Um, and the couple people that are on here saying, well, you know, just because it haven't happened doesn't mean they're not. Well, that's really life. Anything can happen in life, whether you're in a car. Since we started this in two thousand eighteen, I've had two trucks totaled myself. Um, you know, just how it is. I haven't been in any UTV route, but I've been in two, two vehicle accidents. So not my fault. Just wanna let you know that. Um, so that's kind of my, my case right there. So.
Okay. Uh, Eileen, questions, comments?
I have no questions or comments at this time.
Ken, questions or comments?
Yes, I have some question. Excuse me. And the first one is looking at, uh, and can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Looking at um, this limit or noise coming from the vehicle says it cannot exceed ninety-six decibel. Okay, my question is, how is that ninety-six determined? Why, why, why did it pick ninety-six? And I believe Isaac, you, you gave us the document that a city manager about readings that you took at different place at a particular place. And the highest readings were sixty-five decibels a motorcycle and on the back page seventy-six motorcycle. So my question is, um, are you saying that we can go over a motorcycle from seventy-six to ninety-six and still be within the limit with a ATV, UTV?
You wanna know if the UTVs can get louder yet or the motorcycles? Is that what you're asking, Ken?
Well, according to information given here, this is what it's saying.
Right. That's what it. Yeah, I guess they can go up to ninety decibels. Is that right, Isaac? That's the state law?
I, I just imagine I've never heard one that loud. I've actually been to events.
It's on.
Um, an ATV, UTV events where they actually have.
What's right in the document here, it's on the second to last page before the signature by Eileen Nichols. It's the item uh I. And that's supposed to see exceed ninety-six decibels. And this document you gave me this, that I got from city manager, it lists all these different pieces, uh, of, of different vehicles and um, there's nothing written there that says that's eighty, ninety decibels or above those numbers. So how does this fit in? Doesn't seem, this is not logical.
I, I think what Isaac was trying to show. Yeah, go ahead, Isaac. I'm sorry.
So Ken, what I was trying to show you there is that we, I purchased a decimal meter reader and set it down and, and metered the vehicles that went by my house. So those are the actual readings of when a vehicle went by my house. It, um, twenty-five, I don't know how fast they're going, but speed limit is twenty-five by my house. At a range of fifty feet away, which is what my patio to the curb is, and that's what each individual um, vehicle, see whether it be a car, a minivan, a truck went by at. The two highest ones were the motorcycles. There were a couple of um, full-size trucks that were in the sixties. The majority of them were in their fifties. So that's, then the.
If you wanna.
K and M, that is my.
If you wanna prove your point, why don't you set up a situation where you have a vehicle go by at fifteen miles per hour, twenty-five miles per hour, thirty-five, forty at the most, and you measure those and those are the ATVs and UTVs?
Well, the speed limits in town roughly are the twenty-five, so that's what we did there. I've been to an event where they tried making these loud, the owners do. And at the event, we never, I've never, um, the machines never got to the ninety or the ninety-six, whatever it is. And that's what these people purposely try and make them loud and revving them up. So to get to that ninety or whatever you're looking at, you would have to be, you'd have to be at highway speed. It wouldn't happen in town.
So we do have, what's the highest speed in town, forty miles per hour?
Twenty-five, right, Howard?
No, there's, if they go out by toward uh Lancaster, there's a section that's forty miles an hour.
The routes that are selected are twenty-five miles per hour, uh, well, uh, thirty-five, thirty-five miles per hour or less uh, per the state ordinances. Um, any, any location that's above thirty-five miles per hour in the city limits are prohibited.
By ATVs, UTV?
Prohibited from ATVs, UTVs, yes.
By state law.
On the state highways, yes.
By state law.
Well, then my next question is, um, I think I brought it up the previous time. As I was at Quick Trip uh one summer and this uh, I call it uh, it, it had uh four wheels and two front seats and back seats and they gassed up and then they got out on water street and they poured on the gas and made a loud noise. Now, why would a vehicle uh be allowed to do that? They must have the capacity to go way up as far as the decibels. How can we prevent something like that?
Uh, Doug, you might wanna respond, but as a, I, I've seen trucks do the same thing, or cars. And I don't know how you prevent people from uh revving and I, I.
Well.
I guess eventually the police get a hold of them, but it could be for any type of vehicle.
You're gonna get violations, like you said, from all vehicles or all types of vehicles. And we would request that people complain to us or make us aware of it and we'll try and deal with them.
I think.
First citations I ever wrote was for a loud vehicle. And I'm sure that our officers are still writing them.
I think we need a better system as far as uh getting these people that are making too much noise.
That's not exclusive to ATVs or UTVs.
Right. I'm talking about the city in, in total. So that uh, there's too much noise in this city. So I think this is something that needs to be done overall. Overall, I believe that we have enough uh as far as uh traffic uh location to get from one side of the city to the other. I don't believe we should be going into the neighborhoods. And um, I'm not in favor of increasing that number as far as the number of streets.
Kathy?
I just wanna comment, um, as far as the, the tourism piece, um, while I'm not at the chamber anymore, I am still on the governor's tourism council. Um, actually, in the last two years, they, they created in, in another department within the Department of Tourism called Outdoor Recreation. And the Department of Tourism, um, is putting millions of dollars of, of their marketing money into outdoor recreation to bring people not only into the state um, from other states to do outdoor recreation, but they're encouraging uh, community to community uh outdoor recreation. Um, it's, they're working on getting the handle on economic impact, um, but um, on a local level, um, I know that the chamber is aggressively working um, to promote the ATVs, um, like, like Chad and Isaac have said. The front page of the twenty-twenty-one Platteville Community Guide that the chamber puts out and the twenty-twenty-one Grant County Travel Planner, both have big pictures of ATVs. Um, the ATV piece is huge and growing rapidly for the state of Wisconsin. Um, the um, in particular from the Department of Tourism, it's because a, a lot of it is, I mean, we ha- we have all the natural um, things that it takes for outdoor recreation. But they even doubled down more since last year with COVID. They're still dealing with COVID. And anything outdoor, uh, outdoors is what they're going to be promoting. And I guess just one comment, um, if anyone has a question about the noise, um, the chamber is celebrating National Tourism Week, um, starting May third. And they, they are having um, an open house at five-thirty. It's a Monday. And um, Drew Nussbaum from um, our area rep from the Department of Tourism is, is gonna be a guest speaker. Um, he's going to have the last year's economic impact, which we know is probably gonna be considerably down because of COVID. Um, but he, he would be a good person to talk to. And also I know that, um, that um, the ATV club has been asked to bring a couple of the ATVs. So if anybody wants to take a look at them or hear how loud they are, um, go down to the chamber at five-thirty on, on May third. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I guess I'm the last one. Uh, I live on an ATV route. I'm probably the only council member here that does. Um, but I do live on an ATV route. And um, uh, Isaac, thank you for sharing the noise information. I would have to definitely agree with you. I hear lots of things that are a lot louder than ATVs go by. In fact, I've never run out my door to see what's going, what it was and found it to be an ATV. It more generally is a truck or a motorcycle or a tiny little car, which makes a lot of noise. So it's the, the, the noise factor isn't for me. David, uh, Evan, I hear you on the, on the uh compromise situation. I also remember distinctly last year talking about uh, the Monroe ordinance, which I guess we found was illegal, which said, these are the routes. Except if you have a ATV, then you can go back and forth to your house, even if it's not on the route. I, I think I had, I think I've paraphr- paraphrased that uh, to the extent that I know how to paraphrase it. Uh, would you agree with that, uh, Chad and Isaac? Is that kinda how it operates in Monroe? Yeah. Yeah, they could, and uh, Chad, did I hear you say you would not uh, re, uh, you would not uh post roads? You would leave the routes posted as they are?
I would, I, I would leave the signs that we have up.
And not add signs?
No, I wouldn't, uh, unless it was what we would call like a corridor is what we do on maybe a, to connect um, where dead ends are at. Um, up by Isaac's house, um, out past Field Rose, out on Ridge Avenue, you know, that's a dead end there. Maybe possibly signing that, but other than that, minimal signage. Um, I think we already have most of the corridors marked.
Okay, if you could give us a map of any additional signage you put up. It's one thing to open up, it's one thing to open up roads. It's another thing to op- to sign that you're welcome to go on any road you want. If this is really for the convenience of.
So you do have.
If this is really for the convenience of Platteville people who have ATVs who aren't able to get to a route now. If that's really what this is about.
Yes. And, and easier to police.
Right, but the real, what I hear you saying.
Yes.
So now you have to decide if that's what you're saying. What I hear you saying is it's really for the convenience of Platteville residents who may have, who may currently be owners or who may want to be owners, but they don't live on a route. So that means that if they get one, they have to trailer it to a route or they have to be like the kid or me kid, the young person, or maybe it wasn't a young person who had, was reported multiple times for doing, for going to an ATV route, but not on route. I mean, I, I think you have to be clear about what your intent is, cuz just like Jason said, when, when this originally came to the council in twenty-eighteen, it was all about tourism. We have to have these routes. We have to have, because what, this is all about tourism. I mean, I, I remember those discussions. Now it, so be clear about your intent. Is what I'm saying. Perhaps you can, you can uh discuss that as a club or whatever, but if the intent is really the convenience of Platteville residents, then let's talk about what the intent is.
Barb, we would have to, we would have to install these four signs, one on each entrance coming into town that does state that all roads, um, I can't remember the exact phrasing. All roads within the city of Platteville open unless, unless otherwise no posted. But as Chad's trying to state, and other cities do this, that they'd leave the existing signs up so that shows for people that are out of town, these are the routes through town to like save a business or to the next way out of town.
Okay.
So that, that is something that would have to be done. I mean, that's, that's just the.
That's the law, except that they aren't really all open, because there's a lot of them that can't be open. Like in Knollwood and uh, on the east side of town and so.
And that's where we would get the maps check. And that's where the, you know, the continuation of telling people that is, you know, getting new maps, putting it on the city's website, our site as well. Um, you know, that's something that would be done right away. So.
Okay, so if there are any corridors you're gonna consider marking, we'd like to know what that is. And I, I mean, at least minimally. And I don't know that.
Those are the ones that are, those are the ones that are already up.
No, but Chad just mentioned adding some. So perhaps you guys could come back with that information, whatever that information is.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've probably heard everyone tonight on this and have some idea of people's feelings on this. So uh, we'll look for some additional information from you, Chad, and the club. Um, if people are interested in knowing what an ATV sounds like or looks like, they can go to the chamber on Monday night. Um, and uh, Chad, you'll clarify your intent uh, so that we're all clear of what we're trying to uh achieve. Okay? All right, let's move on to the next agenda item. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item. Uh, City of Platteville mission statement. Adam, I think that's you, yep.
That is me, all right, so, um. Obviously, we've been talking about this for a couple of meetings, so based on kind of the feedback of what I heard from the last meeting. Uh, made a couple of changes, so what we looked at doing is we now have kind of three things to think about or look at. One is the tentative vision statement update, so basically looking at what was done in two thousand thirteen was the comprehensive. In our comprehensive plan, we had a vision statement, um, looking at kind of sprucing that up and providing a bit of an update. So the tentative example now, um, after some of the feedback I heard was removing some of, some wording in there, or trying to make it um, a little different was. You know, the vision example is the city of Platteville is a place of rich history and distinctive character encompassed within the Driftless Region of Wisconsin. The city strives to be recognized as an inclusive, safe, sustainable, welcoming, and engaged university community. The city is dedicated to being a regional center for business and aspires to be the premier visitor destination location in Grant County, Wisconsin. So that essentially is the tentative vision statement. Then the mission statement, as we talked about, was looking at creating something that would be about two sentences. Um, so what I proposed is it is the mission of the city of Platteville to continuously improve the quality of life for our residents and visitors. By delivering cost-effective, highly responsive services with integrity and transparency. So that essentially is a kind of sample mission statement. Um, and then we talked a little bit at the last meeting about kind of coming up with a motto, and I think this is something that we potentially could do as a. Kind of Facebook campaign or kind of public challenge. And so the one I just came up with again is unearthing the Driftless Region, and I think the challenge could be is we could ask the community. Beat it, you know, what do you think the motto should be? If you don't like that one, come up with a better one. Um, so that's kind of the three examples that listening into the feedback and kind of putting things in there and removing things. Um, that's where we're at, so again, this is kind of a process, we continue to kind of tweak and look at things and go there, so that's where we're at.
Okay, anybody with thoughts about unearthing the Driftless Region, Eileen?
No.
No? Uh, Ken?
No, no response.
Kathy?
No, I'm good right now.
Jason?
Um, nope, nothing, nothing further.
Isaac?
Nope.
Okay, Adam, you got nothing tonight, I think we're tired.
Okay, good.
All right, let us, let us ruminate on unearthing the Driftless Region, okay?
Yep, think about it.
I, in the meantime, let's see if you can do a COVID nineteen municipal update in record time.
Sure, so I'm not even going to go over the numbers, um, but essentially we've had an update, so what else say about the numbers is. We are starting now to see, um, the averages going down, so that was at six point eight, we're now at four point eight cases over the past fourteen days. Um, essentially, the university, you know, and the calls were on, they continue to average between about one and three students. Um, that are testing positive, but again, their numbers are way down from where they were before. Um, overall, there's about four point two million vaccines that have been allocated, um, there's been about four point two that have actually been administered. Uh, from Grant County standpoint, uh, we currently are at thirty-six point seven percent of residents or eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. Um, have received at least one dose of the vaccine, uh, twenty-eight point seven percent have been fully vaccinated. Um, eighty-six point six percent of that is sixty-five and over. Um, so obviously, you know, one of the new things that has been announced, um, Grant County announced yesterday is they did see the first case. Of the B one point three five one COVID nineteen, that is the South African variant. Um, that is not unexpected, uh, that obviously is, is occurring, but that has been made aware. Um, so again, on Thursday, April twenty-ninth, from ten AM uh, to one PM at the Brodsky Center. Uh, they are doing uh, the vaccine for Moderna, um, so it is a walk-in, you don't need to have an appointment, you can just walk in and do that. Uh, they're continuing to do uh, testing on Tuesdays. Um, in Lancaster, and now in the calls that I've been on, they're also looking at kind of getting out more into different communities. Um, to try to do satellite clinics, so they've been looking at Saturdays and looking at uh, other municipalities like the Tosi and other areas. Um, and so obviously, you know, the city right now continues to kind of review. The CDC guidelines and changes that are occurring, um, I think today they just announced kind of some differences with if you have been fully vaccinated. And you're outside, um, there's been some mass changes, so we are going to continue to kind of look at those and incorporate that. And our intention right now, kind of as city hall and staff, is to look at potentially, um, you know, our current state of emergency expires on June thirtieth. Um, so if the numbers kind of continue to be where they are, um, and reviewing guidelines at that time, our intention is about, you know, starting in July to return to. Kind of full meetings, um, and review at that time what the recommendation would be for, um, you know, kind of mass. Um, in regards to being indoors and in city hall, so that's your short update.
Okay. Um, I should have probably done this at the beginning of the meeting. But uh, I want to issue special thanks to Adam and to Ryan for the work they did last year, last week. To uh, heighten the knowledge of the need for our fire station. Uh, with our congressional delegation, so uh. Uh, Ryan and Adam were heavily involved in assembling information and getting it off. To Congressman Kind and others, uh, we had uh, some twenty-two letters of support. Uh, and we certainly thank uh, all of our supporters, uh, Senator Mark Klein and. Uh, Assemblyman Tranel wrote letters, as, as did uh, many of our economic partners. The surrounding townships that use our service, uh, businesses, uh, just a whole, the university.
District, University, South of State.
Yeah, so uh, commending uh, Adam and Ryan. For uh, getting that done on a very short timeline, and uh, perhaps putting aside other things that. Uh, they had planned to do, so thank you for that. And now, uh, we're done with the information discussion items on our. We do have a closed session scheduled for Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five, here in one parent key. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and this is specifically about economic development. So I would ask for a motion to go to closed session, and then to adjourn from closed session where we do not expect to take any action. So this is not a meeting that would, where we will come out with action, so uh, adjourning to, or uh, going to closed session. And then adjourning at the end of the closed session, so I would take that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Isaac, a second by Ken, to go, go to closed session and then adjourn, uh, pandas will vote. Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
I don't believe I've seen Robin come in. Oh, I didn't see Robin show up, so, okay. All right, and uh, everybody has their meeting information, and thank you to all who attended, and have a good evening.